Take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Wrong glasses. Vanez.
Here.
Kalwinski. Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, eight, seven, wait a minute. Seven present, one by electronically and one absent. Councilman Kalwinski, who by the way is, did say he's ill today. He called in and he wasn't going to be here. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilman. My mayor's report for February 10th. I want to thank everybody in the audience. There's a large presence of supporters of the Governor's Parkway Bridge here, and they've been here since 4:30. So, I want to thank everybody. There's literally hundreds of people behind me, and there's more people out in the hallway trying to get in right now. So, we're at capacity in the council chamber, and I just want to thank everybody that showed up because I know the council, over the last few months, couple months, whatever, has been seeing green shirts out there. And it was looking like they were the only ones that ever talked about this proposal, Governor's Parkway Bridge. There's a resolution before you today. And today, we have a lot of supporters packed in the council chamber. So, thank you for being here. I know that's up for an agenda item later on. So, the Governor's Parkway Resolution's going down today. We also have the CCBG budget up for approval, third and final today, and a Section 108 loan for the sportsplex. The sportsplex expansion is up for approval tonight as well. Section 108 loans, a loan from the federal government that's helping us with the expansion of the sportsplex, by the way. So, that's a real good, a real good project that you all are considering today as well. So, thank you for that. I want to report to the council. I'm sure you're aware of this by now. I wasn't here at your last council meeting, but all negotiations between all unions is wrapped up. All unions have four-year deals under their belt. Everybody appears to be happy, as happy as you can be. So, I'm pretty happy about that. I want to thank you, thank the council for the support during the negotiations. Thank my negotiating team, my chief of staff, Scott, as well as the unions that we bargained with. I think it was a really professional year for us. I wanted to report to the council that if it's not actually today, within the next day or so, the city of Hammond will be officially the owners of the haunted house site located off of Calumet and 8094. We are in the process of writing the checks. So, we are, Councilman Emerson. If we're not the official owners today, it'll be probably tomorrow or the day after. The city of Hammond will be the official owner of that site. We will be putting it out for RFP. We will be marketing that site, looking for an impactful development in the 4th district that we could be proud of here. So, congratulations, Councilman Emerson. Forty-five, 4925 Soul Avenue. There's been a flurry of activity on this location recently. For those of you that aren't aware, it's a own Spone School site. I've been communicating with Councilman Salinas about a lot of interest in that site. It appears that the First Baptist Church has made the decision to sell that site to Highland Christian School. And Highland Christian School has big plans. They want to expand their presence here in the city of Hammond. I think that's a blessing for our city. Obviously, the Spone School site was used by the Baptist Church for a long time, and it sat relatively, I mean, underutilized. Now, I'm not going to say vacant, but underutilized for a long time. Scott, I believe that's the same group that owns Illiana Christian. Is that true?
There are multiple groups looking to come together.
But it's all like the same family of?
The Illiana Crown Point in Hammond.
This is a group that has money and the ability to get things done, and they're looking strategically at the Spone School site as a possible expansion of their mission in Hammond. I think that's a positive. We do have an economic development project that we had for that piece of property. I think that we could still make that happen. And that's our challenge right now is there's two companies that are interested in building in the city of Hammond. They're looking at about $100 million investment. They wanted this piece of property. Obviously, that's not going to happen at that location, but I think we could still make that happen. Councilman Salinas, that's my mission to, so that we don't have to say no to those two companies, okay? Okay? But I think it's a positive that Highland Christian's coming, but I think we could do two positives. So, that's the goal. So, anyway, mayor's activity log. I met with Bill Gustafson, who's the CEO of Horseshoe Casino Hammond. We had a couple meetings over the last couple of weeks regarding complaints I received from a resident during mayor's night out. He called me. I didn't call him. I was confronted in mayor's night out about what's going on at Horseshoe Casino by a resident at mayor's night out. And Bill reached out to me and wanted to talk to me. And I'll report back to the council once we've had. I have a meeting coming up with the CEO of the parent company. So, met with Hammond Fire Department Chief and the deputy chief regarding open battalion chief positions. Interviewed three captains in the Hammond Fire Department in regards to the open battalion chief position and made the following decisions. We appointed Chris Turton, who is a 32-year veteran of the, who is a battalion chief in the Hammond Fire Department. We promoted Chris Turton to assistant chief. We promoted Captain Brian Robson, who's a 27-year veteran, who went from senior captain at Station 1 to North Battalion Battalion Chief. And we promoted Ryan Aggiano, a 20-year veteran that went from battalion chief to the assistant chief drill master. Congratulations to those three firefighters, and thank you for devoting your career to the city of Hammond, protecting us while we sleep. Met with East Chicago Mayor Anthony Copeland over the last couple of weeks regarding an item of shared interest between our water departments. And it was a very positive meeting. I haven't talked to Mayor Copeland in a long time. He came to Hammond City Hall. It was a very pleasant meeting. And I'm willing to talk to the council more about that when I'm not on the record. But it's interesting idea that we're exploring with a neighboring mayor. So, met with Pastor Wilkerson. Obviously, lots going on with the church. I indicated the Spone School property. Pastor Wilkerson and I had a couple of meetings about that. I want to thank him for working with us on that whole process. Met with the Hammond Utility Chiefs in regards to the new president of the United States and the effect of this administration's change on the Hammond Sanitary District as well as the Hammond Water Department. Had lunch with Mayor Spievar from Whiting to catch up and work out issues between our cities. I'm sorry, this is a lot, but I've had a lot going on. Attended mayor's night out in the 1st district. I'm trying to go faster. Breakfast with Chancellor Ken Holford from Purdue Northwest. He was telling me about the new dorm that's going to be going in the 5th district, Councilman Warple. Multi-million dollar investment by Purdue Northwest, another dorm that they want to do there. He was telling me about that. Also, wants to talk to us about Dallin Park. Purdue's interest in Dallin Park is strong. They are desiring a permanent presence in that park. So, that's something that we're going to have to grapple with, I imagine, pretty soon. Read to Ms. Rachel Sterzick's first grade class at Jefferson Elementary School. I do that every year for her. Touched base with Councilman Janet Vanez regarding a variety of topics. Met with the police captains in a monthly meeting, like I always do. Held meetings with planning, zoning, inspections, code enforcement, building departments, HDM, and economic development on Councilman Mark Kalwinski's favorite address, 3141 First Street. We had a high-level meeting based on the councilman's complaints. And I know that address like off the top of my head, and that's not good for that address. We have a meeting with the owners of that property coming up shortly. Had breakfast with Councilman Barry Tyler on a variety of topics applicable to Hammond's 3rd district. Attended Hammond's annual Black History Celebration at the Hammond Civic Center. Attended and played in Hammond's Employee Olympics. I want to thank the council people that showed up that day. My team took 3rd place. Hammond Fire Department wins every time, and they did again. They keep the streak alive. And attended the Whiting-Robertsdale Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner at the Dynasty Banquet Hall. I want to congratulate Ron Novak, who was selected by the Whiting-Robertsdale Chamber of Commerce as the Public Servant of the Year. And Ron's right there in the front row, so thank you. That makes up for the fact I left the meeting early. So, congratulations. I want to thank Ron. I want to thank everybody for being here. And I want to thank the council most of all. Sorry about the long report. That's all I got, unless you have any questions.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I do have a question. With ICE agents being just across the border, how are we anticipating handling that here in Hammond?
Thank you, ma'am. I've actually, the police captains meeting I do with the police, we actually brought that up this week, talking about how the Hammond Police are going to respond to ICE requests. And so, I'm glad you asked that, first off. This is a tough question. If the DEA came to the Hammond Police Department and needed the Hammond Police Department's assistance, or the FBI came to Hammond Police Department and needed the Hammond Police Department's assistance, and they were trying to get a bad guy, we would assist them. That's what we do. Just like if ICE comes up to the Hammond Police Department with a specific request, trying to get a bad guy out of our city, Hammond Police Department will help them, Councilwoman. However, Hammond Police Department will not go on hunting expeditions. We're not going to go fishing, looking for people. If there is a specific target that ICE, or the DEA, or Federal Bureau of Investigations, or any federal agency, they have a specific target, they have an identity, a location, all the necessary paperwork, we'll help them, like we do with all federal agencies. But we're not going to go fishing.
So, in other words, criminals?
Yes, ma'am. We're not going to be going into schools. If the ICE agents do that, and I don't believe they've done that, but if that's the way they're going to go, we're not going to be part of it. I promise you that. We're not going to be, if they want to get bad, bad people, felons, violent criminals out of our cities, I have no problem helping with that. And I know the police chief and the administration's comfortable with that as well. We, I'm glad you asked that, Councilwoman. We talked about that this week. So, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Which, what details can you share with us at this time about the Highland Christian?
I don't want to screw up the deal, but I think it's very encouraging, Councilman. I think the First Baptist Church at Spone School, they were, it was a very underutilized piece of property. There's room for a lot more students there. I think that a well-funded organization like Highland Christian could fix the school up and make the necessary improvements to attract a large number of students. And with the voucher laws being the way they are in Indiana, a kid could go to that school for free. And I imagine it's going to be a high-quality school. So, as the mayor, I feel good about what we're doing as mayor because my job is to provide a city that's livable, right? I understand that school city may not love this development. I understand that, right? But as a mayor, we're giving options to our, to our residents. We're giving other options, and this is, it's a proven school with a great track record, so.
Would this just be the high school level grades?
Last I heard, Scott, I think it's K-12, if I believe.
To begin with, they're looking at elementary and then building up from there to high school as well. But they're also now looking to start this coming fall, a whole year and a half from now.
Will they be expanding that building? Would they look into expanding, or are they just going to operate in current?
I believe Spone can hold 1,400 students. So, like, there's no need to do expansion, but fixing it up, absolutely. Roof is, there's places where you can see daylight where the roof is right now. So, yeah.
And Councilman, if it is going to be a school that offers athletics, you know, there's room there to grow, but they would need our cooperation from the city as well. So, it's not like they could operate in a vacuum without coming to the Hammond City Council or to the mayor. So, we'll have our chance to ask questions and get answers and give our input in this process, Councilman.
Thank you.
And it's already zoned to school, school for school. So, they could buy it for a school. We don't have to rezone it, but they're going to need our help. And I have a feeling this is going to be a good group to work with. I think you're going to be impressed as the 2nd district councilman.
Anybody else got any questions or comments for the mayor?
I apologize about the length, but there's a lot going on. I just want to be transparent with you all, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on any farther, for those of you that are new, sign-in sheet if you want to speak during public expression. You're allowed three minutes to say whatever you want. We can't respond. And in previous meetings, there's been a lot of applause and noise made during the meeting. And I want people to understand, nobody is here to not listen to what you got to say. But the applause and the disruption of meeting, we'll try to stop it. And if it continues, we'll just ask the police, the people that don't want to follow the rules, to kindly remove them. It's not that we're trying to keep anybody from speaking. It's, there are rules for a public meeting, and this is a public meeting.
Mr. President? Sorry, I do have one question for you, sorry. Just following up on Councilman Vanez's question around ICE. I know that we're not legally required to assist immigration. There's not, we're not legally required to assist immigration. There's not, there's not, there's not, there's not. There's not, there's not, there's not. There's not, there's not, there's not. Resident of Hammond, there's not, there's not. There's not, there's not. There's not, there's not. Resident of Hammond that's been convicted of rape, and we can't find him, was accused of, and this is where this question is okayed. We're going to go there. We need the Hammond Police Department to assist us. Those are the cases we could help with. We want to hang out at the sportsplex and identify somebody.
We want the Hammond Police Department's help? No, okay? Specific targets, violent criminals?
Just like we do with DEA, Councilman. Just like we do with FBI, we assist these units. So, ICE wouldn't be any different if it's a violent criminal. Thank you. We want to clarify that.
No problem. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? Moving on, approval of minutes.
Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion.
Councilman Salinas.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from the January 27th, 2025 meeting and place them on file.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Salinas, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated January 28th, 2025, and ending with claims dated February 5th, 2025. Claim number 877 through claim number 1376, inclusive in the amount of $10,110,277.2. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Council Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, eight in favor, one absent. Item number six, public hearings.
Ordinance number 25-01, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year 2025.
Does anybody wish to speak on the ordinance appropriating the proceeds? Does anybody wish to speak on ordinance 2501? Does anybody wish to speak on ordinance 2501? Hearing done. Public hearings are closed. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications?
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakels.
I wanted to let everybody know from HC3, our St. Patrick's Day Parade will be on March 15th, starting at 2:00 p.m. We have a new parade route. It will start basically from Morton Elementary School to 171st down Kennedy to 165th, and then east on 165th to Harding School. But they'll, will be on March 15th at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything under communications?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
I know the mayor touched on this, but I want to thank the Black History Celebration Committee for putting on another Black History program that was well-attended and well-orchestrated. So, thank you for that. Also want to announce the PTA is having their Founder's Day Dinner on February 21st at Dynasty Banquets at 5:30 p.m. The Affiliates Scene Center is having their Black and White Ball on Saturday, February 22nd as well. And I believe that is, oh, and the mayor's disability, Disabilities Awards Breakfast is on March 20th at 8:00 a.m. at Dynasty Banquets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything under communications? Any more communications? Communications are closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President?
Councilman Salinas.
I have a committee report from the Capital Improvement Board. The Capital Improvement Board met on February 3rd, 2025, and we had two funding allocations in that meeting. The first funding allocation, number 230, dealt with the 4,600 block of Torrance Avenue reconstruction between Goslin to Hudson. This is a supplemental design which included additional parking along the Parkway and the bike path construction. This was awarded to United Consulting in the amount of $16,800. The second funding allocation, number 231, was a general engineering service contract with NICE Engineering in the amount of $60,000. This is a service contract that includes a lot of different drainage solutions. That was all from the Capital Improvement Board.
Thank you. Any other?
Mr.? Councilor Hall, I'm going to bring out 2501.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, February 12th, 1:00 p.m. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, March 5th, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, March 4th, 6:00 p.m. at the VFW across from Harrison Park. Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the HC3 Community Center on Thursday, February 20th, 6:00 p.m. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, February 11th, 9:30 a.m. at Irving School. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, February 13th, at Calumet College, beginning at 6:30 p.m. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will not meet until April. They have semi-annual meetings, so just put a checkmark on your calendar for April. As usual, I urge everyone to attend a community or crime watch meeting to find out what's going on in your neighborhood and how you can protect your family and your property. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vanez. Does anybody else have anything under committee reports? Anybody else have anything under committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine.
Ordinance number 25-01, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of the planned proceeds for program year 2025.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
For final passage, if 2501?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
President?
Councilman Spitali.
Appropriate the CDBG, the home, and ESG budgets. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing done. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, motion carries nine, eight in favor, one absent.
President Warple, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, deduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance number 25-02, sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Tyler, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of a Section 108 guaranteed loan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of loan proceeds for program year 2025.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
For final passage. What'd you say? Yeah. Move for first and second reading. Council as a whole, the meeting set for February 24th, 2025. Public hearing for February 24th, 2025, for 5:15. Second.
Second.
So, the council as a whole, committee hearing is at 5:15. The public hearings during the meeting. Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, just want to add a little bit more information about what the loan will be for. It's for the expansion of the sportsplex. And I'm guessing, Mayor, you want to discuss?
You can do it, Councilman. You can do it.
Well, no, I would love for you to share more about what the expansion will include.
Sure, I have no problem. I'll wait for you to.
No, just want to share that that's what the ordinance is for.
It's around a $10 million expansion, Councilman. I know that the Section 108 loan's probably 40% to 50% of the total cost. The other cost is earmarked out of the food and beverage tax revenue that we're getting currently. So, this will pay for the entire expansion. Obviously, the sportsplex is doing fantastic. Our volleyball, basketball, soccer programs are exploding. Over half of all the kids in those programs are Hammond residents. I know that's not all Hammond residents. Obviously, it's a big sportsplex. But over half of the kids that participate in those programs are Hammond residents. It's exploding. Obviously, it's done so well that the YMCA chose to move right next door. And the YMCA is doing so well that we're getting economic development opportunities over there that are sort of outside of the box. I have one on my desk right now that I can't really talk about at this time, but it's stuff that we've been talking about for a long time. So, I think that whole area of there is doing fantastic, Councilman. I appreciate you sponsoring the ordinance because I think it's an important project. So, thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
With the expansion, Mayor, I know from my understanding, we'll be able to host maybe some NCAA tournaments?
We, one of the problems that we have, it's not a big problem, but it is a problem, is when we, the volleyball side, the girls and the guys hit it so hard that the ball hits the roof. And if we were a little bit higher on the roof, we wouldn't have that problem. And it is a distraction from these, especially these D1 teams And it is a distraction from these, especially these D1 teams that you're talking about, Councilman. So if we want to attract that kind of talent, we have to have a little bit more clearance on the roof. So what we would do is this new section would be volleyball only. We'd move the volley-- We could still host volleyball in other parts of the sportsplex, but it's a taller roof, and we'd move them into this section, and it would allow us to host larger tournaments. And think about, this is just one more space. We could convert the whole thing over to a basketball tournament, or a volleyball tournament, or soccer, whatever we wanted to do. And right now, I know the sand volleyball courts have been relocated from where we built them, and it was the City Hammond Labor that built them. We kept the important part, which is the expensive sand, and we're relocating that behind the sportsplex as we speak, technically on the west side of the sportsplex. So, thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Councilman--
Mr. Mayor, question--
Salinas.
According to the floor plan--
Mm-hmm.
Some of the designs here, the soccer fields will be relocated to the front of the building, is that correct?
Dude, I could probably get Kim up here to explain exactly, because these change so often. Do you want me to-- I mean, I believe she's here.
She is.
Hi, Kim. Hi, Kim, could you explain so I don't say something wrong? Do you mind? You can come up here, you can do it there, it's up to you. This is Kim Roberts. She just got inducted into IU Hall of Fame, and she runs our sportsplex here. So, congratulations, Kim. IU Northwest, technically, I don't want to misrepresent.
Thank you. So, yes, the soccer courts will be relocated, or fields, to the front of the building.
And I see a couple of-- Are they smaller fields, or what is our plan?
So, it is going to be a 5v5 field, and then on the sides, it's going to be a 3v3. We're going to introduce some different aspects to soccer, as well as a food-sal program that we're going to do with the volleyball, basketball courts.
So, we're getting rid of the current, the walls that are up?
Correct, there will be no more walls, it will be wall-to-wall turf.
Okay. Thank you.
Kim, will you be willing to come back and explain that when we discuss this in caucus in two weeks?
Sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any further discussion?
Councilman Salinas, this has all changed so much, I just wanted to bring up the experts, so, yeah.
Between sportsplex, the Y, and Shepherd Center, I've seen about 1,500 people this weekend.
Yeah.
And I signed my grandson up at the YMCA, and I looked at that stairmaster and thought about getting on it, so.
Yep. But, you know, there's a lot of people here right now, and I want everybody to hear me. That whole area over there is performing really well, and it's-- I know I get to stand on the stage and cut the ribbon, and that's wonderful about being mayor, but I want everybody to know, like, I could not do it without the cooperation of the body that I'm talking to right now. Like, it's a team effort. You guys are involved every step of the way. You give us the green light, and we go out and do it. So I want to thank you, because when I took over as mayor, that area was dead. It was a dying mall. And now you go over there, and the big complaint now is, I can't find a parking space, or there's cars parking in my neighborhood. Those are good problems they have, because we didn't have that problem 20 years ago. So thank you for your help, Council. I think we're pretty close to being done with that project, and this is just one more step in it. So, thank you very much.
So the motion has been made and seconded for council as a whole at 5:15 on the 24th with a public hearing--
24th.
On the 24th.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion?
Bless you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I walk with my wife three times a week there, and it's amazing. I want to thank Kim for what she's done there. It's great, and we walk three times a week. Sometimes I miss Fridays, but I do walk three times a week with my wife, Jeannie.
Councilman Emerson, there's thousands of Hammond residents, thousands of Northwest Indiana residents that participate in the walking program at the sportsplex, and we don't charge them. So I appreciate you bringing that up. That's a part that we don't talk about very often, is every day, the dozens or hundreds of people that go there just to walk. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Since we're putting it in committee, I don't believe we need a roll call, we can just do a voice vote? So all those in favor of putting this in the committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item B, ordinance 25-03, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance number 9643 of the City of Hammond, as it pertains to the classification of vehicles subject to the Municipal Vehicle Excise Tax pursuant to Indiana Code 6-6-5-2A.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
First and second reading, referred to council as a whole, the meeting set for February 24th, 2025, 5:15.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali--
Mr. President.
--seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I just want the public to know, this is not-- This is a technical correction to the original ordinance that we already discussed. We took the original ordinance and approached the BMV with it, and they had two technical corrections to come back with you, and that's what's before you, is two classifications of vehicles that weren't discussed in our original ordinance. And I don't believe there's too many of those vehicles in Hammond, but you don't piss off the BMV, that's usually the rules I operate by. So we're before you with the technical correction, and that's what is this present ordinance, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Yep, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Sorry, just for clarification, those-- Just so the public knows, those additional vehicles are mini trucks and military vehicles?
Yes, sir. Those are mini trucks and military vehicles, right. We didn't include those in the original ordinance, the BMV flagged us. And our ordinance didn't take place for, if you remember correctly, for another year anyway. So we have plenty of time. Well, I mean, I don't want to delay too long, but it wasn't like it was-- Time was of the essence. We found out about it, and we approached you with this, so.
Anybody else? Is that it? Hearing no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 11, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 25R-02, sponsored by Councilmen Spitali and Tyler. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hammond authorizing the filing a Section 108 loan guarantee application and designating signatories for payment voucher on letters of credit for a Section 108 guarantee loan project.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
For final passage of 25R-02.
Motion's been made for passage of Resolution 25R-02. Motion was made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
As the-- For the resolution, the authorization of the submit of two Section 108 loan application for the sportsplex expansion project.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Clerk Golick roll call.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Galwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, motion carries, eight in favor, or one absent.
Item B, Resolution 25R-03, sponsored by Mayor McDermott. A resolution of the City of Hammond Common Council in support of the Governor's Parkway Railroad Overpass Project.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I'd like to-- For final passage of Resolution 95R3.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Rakos.
I'd like to read it in its entirety rather than having Clerk Golick have to do it. I'm willing to do that, if that would be okay?
That's fine.
I'll read it. The City of Hammond Common Council in support of the Governor's Parkway Railroad Bypass Project. Whereas the Common Council of the City of Hammond acknowledges the valuable role railroads play in the nation's supply chain while also recognizing the need to address the longstanding issue of numerous and lengthy train delays and accidents near any of the 53 at-grade railroad crossings throughout the city, which are particularly prevalent in the Hessville neighborhood of our city. And, whereas over the last 100 years, railroad infrastructure has created hazards due to frequent crossings of railroad tracks by vehicles, pedestrians, increasing the risk of accidents, delays, and loss of life, and impacting the quality of life in our city. And whereas trains stopped within at-grade railroad crossings, including for prolonged periods of multiple hours, inhibit travel not only for residents and visitors, but decrease rapid response times for emergency professionals, including EMS, fire, and police. And whereas, Federal Railroad Association creating the Railroad Crossing Elimination RCE program to provide funding for highway rail or pathway rail grade crossing improvements that focus on improving the safety and mobility of the people and goods. And, whereas the RCE program awarded the City of Hammond $7,29,392 to eliminate two at-grade crossings where Parish Avenue and Arizona Avenue intersect with Norfolk and Southern's rail line, and to build a grade-separated road overpass, a new road to be named Governor's Parkway. And whereas, the state of Indiana also created a local tracks rail overpass program aimed at improving safety and quality of life for residents through the large-scale related transportation projects, in which the City of Hammond was awarded $5,460,070 to further fund the Governor's Parkway project. And, whereas the Common Council passed ordinance number 9516 on September 27th, 2021, to appropriate American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds for the specific use under ARPA Section 603, including $3,570,000 for Governor's Parkway Railway Overpass Project, conveying this council's prior and ongoing support of this project. And, whereas the amount of ARPA funds appropriated to the project were later reduced to $2.5 million by ordinance number 9623, ARPA 3.0, passed by the Common Council on January 8th, 2024, because the amount of cities matched was lessened due to an increase in state and federal funds made available to the city for the project. And, whereas the Indiana Department of Transportation provided legal notice of a public hearing to be held on April 26th, 2023, for the purpose of offering all interested persons an opportunity to comment on current design plans for the project in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations, Title 23, Section 771. And, whereas local feedback was requested through community surveys targeted at those areas where Governor's Parkway would be utilized by residents and to identify issues and mitigate impacts, while enhancing transparency and building trust with the Hammond constituents. And, whereas, over 600 responses were received via survey in which approximately 60% of respondents indicated they were impacted by stopped trains at least once per day. 83% of the respondents somewhat strongly or very strongly felt that the City of Hammond needed to address this issue. 75% of the respondents were somewhat or strongly in favor of a new bridge, and 63% of the respondents were somewhat or strongly in favor of the new bridge at the preferred location. And, whereas environmental studies and engineering analysis were conducted, which indicated the proposed location of the Governor's Parkway project would not have negative impacts on wetlands and streams, floodways, historic properties, or noise increases. And, whereas in effort to mitigate any disruption of the Briar East Woods, INDOT and Hammond will find that the Student Conservation Association replant approximately 24 acres of trees, double the number of trees impacted by this construction. And, whereas the above stated reasons, the City of Hammond Common Council shall resolve to continue support and endorse the implementation of the Governor's Parkway Railroad Overpass Project, which shall improve safety and quality of life of the Hammond residents and visitors alike. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Hammond hereby formally supports the Governor's Parkway Railroad Overpass Project and intends to commence construction of said project upon procurement of the awarded funds from the Indiana Local Tracks Rail Overpass Program and the Federal Railroad Administration Railroad Crossing Elimination Program. Be it further resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond that this resolution shall be in full force and effect, and after its passage by the Common Council, signing of the president, and therefore, thereof, approval of the mayor. Adopted and approved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond on this day.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mayor McDermott.
I want to point out to the assembled crowd that the City of Hammond has taken a number of steps along the way to get to where we are, an eight-year journey where we are right now. We've approached the council numerous times, we've approached the public numerous times, just like right now. This is not required by law. This is like a final check to make sure we're all on the same page from where I sit, because once you're in, we're sending this straight to INDOT, because let's make no mistake about it. Right now, I have on my desk three letters from residents of Highland, Hobart, and Gary, writing letters actively right now to INDOT to try to kill this project. I don't know if I'd ever find myself so bothered by a project in an neighboring city that I would send a letter to INDOT to try to kill money for a project in their town. So what that Highland resident, and that Hobart resident, and that Gary resident are telling us is, don't take that free money, just keep living with those trains there. That's unacceptable. We have a bridge being paid for by federal and state money. We have no Hammond money in this project at all. It's basically 100% being covered by federal money and state money to take care of a problem that's existed in our city for 100 years. And I have a group of people with a straight face that are telling me to say no. Let me give you the ramifications if we say no, because I think it's the most foolish thing that we've ever done as a body. If you're telling me to say no, I think it's a humongous mistake. I think generations will laugh at this body if we say this is a bad idea. Generations of Hammond residents will laugh at us. I think it's a massive mistake that they're asking us to make. Massive. We need to fix it, we need to show unity right now, and that's why we floated this resolution. It's where the money meets the road. Let's go. I'm in. I got my construction vest on. Once you approve this, it's a green sign to me to secure our property and to get ready for construction. That's how I'm approaching it. This is Hammond property, and we're going to get ready for construction, because it's imminent at this point, so.
Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
From my understanding, there's some information in the council office that is pertinent to this conversation, so if you don't mind, I'll just go grab it for a second.
Is that pertaining to an email where someone from the public wants to add an amendment to this?
Yes.
It's my resolution.
We don't take amendments from the public on our resolutions.
I would like to read it just before we move forward. So I guess I'll make a motion--
I'm not telling you you can't go get it, go ahead and get it.
Well, I don't want you guys to move forward to vote without me, so I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for--
Can a person that's not even in the council chamber second a motion to delay the council meeting that she's not even a part of? Is that even legal?
Yes.
Is that-- That's legal for a person that's sitting on her couch to delay a meeting in City Hall?
She has full voting rights in the meeting, man.
The motion's been made and--
Mayor, if-- There's a problem with me sitting at home. If I were-- I would be there if I did not fall down during the ice storm. I would be there in public, so excuse you for saying that. That was very insensitive.
The motion's been made and seconded for a five-minute recess. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
No.
Vanez.
No.
Galwinski. Tyler. Emerson.
No.
Rakos.
No.
Warpo.
No. Let the record show, one, two, three, four, five. One in favor and five opposed. Motion denied. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you. I asked this during caucus, and it was just in regards to federal funds, with the state of what's going on in the country and the president saying about dollars. Is this going to be affected by the-- With the federal dollars dealing with what he said about not being able to get funds and things like that? Do you know that answer?
Yes. It will not be affected. Governor's Parkway will not be affected.
Okay. The other question I asked--
The pedestrian bridge may be affected. This one, we have the money in hand.
Okay. So is there already plans for the pedestrian bridge, is my question, dealing with the kids?
That's a side-- I don't want to talk about-- That's something that has nothing to do with this resolution on the table. It's distracting, so I'm going to stay focused here on Governor's Parkway Bridge.
Okay. Well, then, can you do me a favor? Since you don't want to talk about it there--
Oh, you could--
Please talk with me.
I could talk to you after the meeting, but you're not here.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I explained why I'm not there. I got really hurt falling down some stairs.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
And I just didn't appreciate you being insensitive when I would actually be there if I was not hurt. So, if you can, we can talk over the phone regarding it. I just want to know a little bit more information, and you are the main person that has that information.
No problem.
Thank you for being so rude today.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
No, Mr. President, I got attacked, I want to respond. I take it personally when you make $40,000 a year and you have a track record of not showing up to meetings. So alls you have to do is look at the attendance record, okay, and see the ones that are always doing Zoom, and then you can tell me, is it easy to talk to this particular council person? You make $40,000 a year to be here. $40,000 a year to be here for 24 meetings a year. $40,000. How many people in Hammond would take that job? Lots. Okay? I can't talk to people that aren't here. I don't like Zoom. It's not the pandemic anymore.
Thank you. Councilman Emerson.
I was moved by-- I'm on page three. Whereas in an effort to mitigate any disruption of Briar East Woods, INDOT and Hammond will NDOT and Hammond will fund the Student Conservation Association, the SCA, to replant approximately 24 acres of trees, double the number of trees impacted by this construction. And I was pleased to hear this.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion?
Sorry, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I'm sorry, when I was grabbing the packet, I I think I missed Councilwoman Alexander's question. And it was in reference to the pedestrian bridge. Is that correct?
That was my second question, but he's already said he wasn't going to answer that. And I asked if he would talk with me separately about it. But I don't think he will. And I wasn't trying to be any kind of way. If I was there, I would actually be there, but I don't miss meetings that often. And I, if I am on Zoom and I would, I would take his comments to you and I being on Zoom, but that's not the case here. And that's a sidebar, but again, if I could be present today, I would definitely be present. But if Mayor does not want to talk to me, that is perfectly fine.
Sorry, no. I didn't get a chance to answer, ask my question. My only question is, I know that we've had several conversations and when we talk about the, the Governor's Parkway overpass, we also talk about the accompanying pedestrian bridge. So I guess my question is, I know that part of the complaints from the public is that the Governor's Parkway doesn't address the issue of kids climbing over the tracks. But in response to that, we did enter into this agreement or pursuing the pedestrian bridge that does offer that, correct?
Sort of. I don't totally agree with your proposition though. You led into it saying Governor's Parkway doesn't help people that walk. You basically said that, and I don't agree with that, but I think the pedestrian bridge that's closer to Scott Middle School is better. How about that? Okay, Councilman, I'm not trying to argue. But the pedestrian bridge that we had planned close to Scott Middle School is built for the kids when there's a stop train right there. Because the argument, Councilman Berry, is it's unrealistic to think a kid that lives in that neighborhood right by Scott Middle School is going to go all the way around Governor's Parkway to get to Scott Middle School. So that is accurate what you're saying, but it will help people on foot. It will help people on bike. It's just out of your way, okay? So that's trying to answer your question, Councilman.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. President. We really, we really need to show unity. I hope the council could support me on this.
Okay. Councilwoman Vanez.
I call for the vote.
Motion's been made to call for the vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Rakos. Can I just ask, can you withdraw that motion because I'd like to say a few things on this issue too, because I can speak from the chair?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. I not quite understanding. Does this address the pedestrian bridge? I don't get the logic of if it don't address the pedestrian bridge, then we should just send it all back and say, okay, if we can't have a pedestrian bridge, then we don't want the way for cars to get around through Hessville. So I know I went to gab it, but I don't quite understand that logic. Number two. I've not only lived in Hessville, I've worked in Hessville and like I said, in the caucus, as long as I've been alive, trains have been a problem in Hessville. When I worked on Kennedy Avenue at the post office, there were times that I was on the street for 12 hours, had to wait for a train for an hour to get back to the office, and then had to sit in the post office parking lot waiting for the cars to go through. And I'm sitting there shivering. I'm not asking anybody to feel sorry for me. But I hear one side saying, trains aren't a problem no more in Hessville. What Hessville do you live in? Because they are a problem. So it's kind of disingenuous to say, well, trains aren't a problem no more. That problem's gone. Really? Like, like I've said, I got grandkids that live by Harding School. I go by their house every day. Is it a mirage I'm seeing when I'm stopped by the trains? Come on. So seven, eight years ago, we addressed the problem of trains being a problem in Hessville. And we found a way to fund it through a grant. And when I hear these people say, hold on, I got a better idea. Okay, maybe you do. But do you think we can go, hey, state, never mind what we just put in for, give us that $12 million and let us try a new project? So to delay a project, that's two reasons they're saying delay the project. You're not addressing the pedestrian traffic. So we throw it all away, right? That's the logic I'm hearing. Number two. A few people don't like IRD and you guys, you know, I've, I've sit here and listened and kept my mouth shut. I listen to people's opinions. Everybody's got a right to an opinion. But for them to tell me we're your bosses and you're not doing what we say. I'm sorry, I walked my district in 2023. I know where that train stands as far as my constituents. And granted, I don't just represent my district only. But my district, it's overwhelming in, in favor of it. Maybe because between Kennedy Avenue and in, let's say Osborne. A lot of people go that way to go to the mill. And like I said before, you want to talk about the environment? I sat in a post office truck for hours at a time, sometimes backed up to the other side of the bridge by van tells. I see nothing but exhaust running, exhaust fumes running. Is that good for the environment? Try to explain to your boss one time when a deer ran up the hill and breaks a mirror on your car and they say, what happened to your vehicle? The guy got hit by a deer. How well you think that went over at the post office when he ran up the hill and hit a deer? I was sitting still and a deer ran up and hit me and they're like, only this, this could only happen to you. But my point is, when I hear trains aren't a problem or response times or kids crossing the railroad tracks, I agree. Kids should not be planning or crossing over the trains, but is it come down to nine council people and a mayor have to tell parents how to raise their children? Seriously, is that what it's come down to? We got to say no because parents let their kids cross over the railroad tracks. And I hear, how are you guys going to, I'm going to feel horrible. And like I said two times, and I'll say it one more time. I don't know how many of you can say you sat in a car listening to your grandson on the phone because his dad is dying. And he's crying saying something bad's going on here. My dad's sick. Get here, Grandma and Grandpa. Get here, Grandma and Grandpa. And I'm caught by a damn train. Don't tell me I don't give a shit about kids. That's all I got to say.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Okay, the reason I read that because I, I just have so much, I tried to write it out today over the weekend. I just have so much to say about this situation. The residents in my district overwhelmingly want this train. They know they have a problem, I mean, this bridge for the, to avoid the train traffic in Hessville. Been like that for decades. Before I even got on this council, I was leaving this city hall walking with a woman in her twenties and a woman in her seventies. And the woman in her twenties told us, because, no, trains are really bad in Hessville. I don't know. Is this something new? And we both, the woman in her seventies, I was in my fifties at the time and you were, no, it's been like that. Woman in her seventies, who's got to be almost 85 or 90 now. As long as there's been cars, trains have been a problem, especially in Hessville. It's the way it is. It's the way it will always be when they, and we've had talk with policemen and firemen that the other times where they say, hey, we'll take care of it. We won't do that. And then sometimes they will. They did for a little while, for a couple, for a couple of months. They'll slow down the train track, which means they could do it, but they didn't want to do it until, you know, they didn't do, they didn't care anything about until, you know, ProPublica puts it out on, on the news. They didn't care. Railroads don't care. My constituents, the people in my district deserve to have this thing. It's for safety. I was a fireman for 36 years. Yes, I've seen people hit by trains. I've seen what trains can do to the bodies. I have seen that on the fire department. And if we don't have safety as, as the number one reason why we're doing this, if that's not an issue over some trees that are going to be replanted, then I don't know what is. Yes. We need this bridge that's being provided for us for free. The state and the feds are paying for it. We've been discussing this for years.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Councilman Zalinas.
I just would like to say that as Hammond's second district representative, I've consulted my precinct committee members as well as my neighbors and friends in our neighborhood and we wholeheartedly support this Governor's Parkway project and also support Councilman Rakos and Councilman Warple, whose district this project surrounds.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just, just have a few quick things to share too. I think that what's happening here is like there's facts versus like opinions. And I, I think that is kind of what we're getting hung up on. And I know that trains are a problem. I don't think anybody within our city would disagree with that statement. But some of the facts that I want to clear up, and I think Mayor, you've touched on this tonight. And I think this resolution has touched on it too, but the fact is there is no Hammond, like Councilman Rakos just said, there's no Hammond money for this project. So we are getting this fully funded by outside sources, which I think is a great thing. I know that the current project would take away 12 acres out of the 32 acre dunes, right? But as a part of this project, we are recommitted to planting two dozen acres worth of trees in the, the area surrounding the project. And I know that there's arguments in terms of the current ecosystem that we are demolishing to build the bridge and how the new addition of these trees doesn't solve for that. But I do think there is some silver lining in that. And, and I think it does show our commitment to our city and, and to the environment. And I will hope that the people who oppose this, if it does pass tonight, if we do move forward with it, will come together with us, have conversations with us in determining where those trees go, having that conversation and how we can better utilize other green spaces in our community to provide some of the preservation that they are so hard fighting for as they have been for the past couple of years. I do want to commend the folks who have stood up here and spoken out because it is hard. I know it's tough. It takes courage to come up here and speak on issues. And I know all of us don't agree with everything that has been said. I know there, once again, has been some misinformation. But I do just want to say that these people are just stepping up and speaking on something that they wholeheartedly believe in. And as a black man in this country, I have to commend that. And I wish more people would step up and fight for things that they believe in. And especially in, what I believe has been not a volatile way for the most part over these past couple of years. The other thing I want to just touch on is, you know, I when I think about the historical significance or the argument of the historical significance of these dunes, I know that we are only touching a portion of it, so hopefully there's, there's still room for people to enjoy the dunes after this bridge is, is built. And hopefully also we spend a lot of time talking about this, so maybe more people will come out and maybe we'll be able to get the rest of the woods marked as a historical landmark or something like that. Like hopefully this just starts that conversation so that we can preserve it. I'm somebody who also cares a lot, once again, about the environment. I saw somebody saying this was environmental racism. I don't understand how that is the case. From my understanding, if you look at the rest of the, and Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you look at the rest of the proposed alternatives, this is the, the plan that touches the least amount of homes in terms of removing, removing places where people actually live. And to me, when we have to rank taking someone's home versus eliminating a few acres of trees, my heart has to go with the people in the residence. And that's why when I reviewed all of the proposed alternatives, this one is the one that does make the most sense. So sorry I've spoken so much, just wanted to go on record to share that. And once again, thank everybody here for showing up tonight in support of this and for everybody who showed up in opposition of it too, who are downstairs couldn't make it in. Just thank you for expressing your opinions on such an important issue.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
We just got sucked in to their conversation. We passed an ordinance on September 27th, 2021 to move forward with this. We have listened to all of the reasons why the group is in opposition to this bridge. We've listened for how many years now? We just got sucked into their conversation. We voted on it. We passed it. Case closed. The only reason for this the only reason for this resolution tonight is to make absolutely clear beyond a shadow of a doubt that we passed the ordinance back in 2021. That, that was the purpose of this.
And allocated the funds.
Yes. And so everyone could see when we passed it, when, when the public hearing was held, that was the purpose of this. So, Mr. President, I call for the vote.
Councilwoman Alexander had a comment she'd like to make and then Councilwoman Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick comment.
I'm a member.
One, I never said I didn't agree, I didn't agree with, didn't agree with the bridge because it's going to help our public safety officers get where they have to go. The only question that I, other than what I did ask was can we also find another solution to figuring out something dealing with the kids? That's it. That was not for us to have a whole, whatever that just was. That was literally for some clarity and getting answers. And the only person that can give us those answers is Mayor. So I want to the public, my apologies. But again, I'm sorry that I am home. If I could be there, I would probably, I will be there in person with you all. So thank you for that.
Okay, a motion's been made to call for the vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Spitali, Clerk Golick, call for the vote.
Alexander.
Yeah.
Spitali. Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, motion carries.
I also vote yes. Please record my vote.
Those Hessville guys got to stick together.
Yes, that's right.
Motion carries, eight in favor with one absent. Call for the vote. Roll call on the vote.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Spitali, yes, okay.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show the motion carries eight in favor, one opposed, one absent. Councilman Tyler. Take a five-minute break so those that were downstairs can come upstairs now for
Are you serious?
I gotta pee.
I'm making motion. We take a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess. Thank you.